Good evening. It's seven o'clock. Time for the Eastlime Planning Commission meeting. First, we'll do a roll call.
Cindy Collins.
Randy Barnback.
Kirk Scott.
Rich Gordon.
Nick Menaface.
Tom Fiddy.
Thank you. Now time for the Pledge of Allegiance. Next up is a call for any additions to the agenda. Were there any additions?
I have none.
None? Anybody else? Thank you. Next is a call for public delegations. Public delegations, the time when members of the public are invited to speak to the commission about certain matters, items, referrals, or applications subject to a decision by the commission, a public hearing, or in litigation may not be discussed. During delegations, the members of the commission will not directly answer questions or make comments. Any... Okay. Next up are reports, communications. Are there any? Zoning lays on. Anybody attend a zoning meeting? This is the last one. Well, it was been two meetings ago. We didn't have a meeting last month. Okay. I think I'm scheduled to go to the next one a week or so. Ex officio, Don McKenzie from the Board of Selectmen. Do you have any updates?
Nothing over the years, sir.
Nothing. Okay. Thanks. Next up, Planning Director Gary Geishel. Do you have any updates?
Just to let you know that the Connecticut Department of Transportation bidet plan, this thin-layer deposition at Rocky Neck State Park, on the state Route 156 bridge replacement over the Four Mile River, that I believe the Nature Conservancy got roughly a $4 million grant, and they're doing an entire project over at Rocky Neck where they're going to be doing marsh restoration. So I just wanted to report that to the commission. It's a very lengthy document. That describes the whole project, so I'll email that out to you, so you can have that for your... Prove it at your leisure.
Thank you. Anything else to discuss?
The Twin Valley subdivision is underway. They've got all their silt fence in. The binder course is actually down. The drainage is also in association with that road. I anticipate the detention basins will be completed within the next couple of weeks. They'll have the shoulders loomed and seeded shortly. Their intention is to put these street trees in and get this thing basically ready to turn over to the town as quickly as possible. They anticipate that'll be next year. So they roughly expect being able to build 10 homes, I think, this year, and then the remainder next.
Okay. Thank you. Were any questions? Subcommittee meetings. I don't have any. Chairperson report. I don't have any updates. Next up is the approval of minutes. We didn't have a meeting in May. The meeting minutes for April 8th. Wait, were meeting minutes? Did... Are there any comments on that?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the April 8th, 2025 planning meeting.
Thank you. Do you have a second? Second? Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions?
Aye.
Okay. Five, zero, one. One extension. Next up, we have a public hearing, a continuation of a public hearing on the application of Kristen Clark for Duval Partners LLC. It was an application for a 20-lot subdivision of approximately 12.67 acres of land zone RU-80 on property located on the south side of Holmes Road between 20 and 38 Holmes Road in Eastlime. Mr. Garrity, you need to get an update on that.
I am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Paul Garrity, for the applicant in this case. Mr. Chairman, I had advised Mr. Geishel earlier, I believe it might have been yesterday and the week before, that we intend to, and we are going to withdraw this application tonight. I've got a written letter of withdrawal. One of the issues that we've been faced with, and I think I've made it clear in some of the past hearings, is that we've had difficulties with ledgers in terms of getting them out there in a timely fashion to review this. We had submitted an application in November with test pits having been dug in November. They did not come out until February. Some of those test pits were no longer capable of being used, so we started re-digging. Long and short is, based on the new test pits, and they still have some other pits to review, so we've decided that we will withdraw the application at this time. And I'll submit this to Mr. Geishel, which is a letter of withdrawal. However, at the same time, we have pursuant to your regulations, or intend to submit tonight, a new application for that... It's not, we're not, it's not a formal application. It's for the review process under your regulations. So I'm going to provide that to Mr. Geishel now. That would, this packet includes site plan of the property with the proposed lots, some of the test pit data, the butters within the required distance of that, and also the affordability plan, so that it's clear that this is an affordable housing application for the commission. Assuming we get some of the test out of back, the remaining test out of back, we'll be submitting that. But we're also going to, as I said, submit tonight so that we can start the process of staff review informally before we make a formal application to this commission for that property again.
Okay. Are there any questions on regarding that?
I said my only question was already answered.
Gary, do you have any questions?
I have no further questions.
Okay. Okay. That's fine. Okay. Thank you.
As soon as I get this, I can get it scanned and emailed to the commission. You want to look at it now? You're welcome to. But yeah, I think I can get this done probably into tomorrow and after the mission.
Sounds good. Thank you. So next up issue, I guess, is a zoning referral we have. An application by William R. Sweeney Esquire for proposed text amendment to the Eastlime zoning regulations by modifying Sections 9.2.3 and 9.3.1 to permit mixed-use development in the CB zone and updating section identifiers as necessary. Looks like the zoning commission has a public hearing scheduled for June 19th.
You have two memos in your packet from me on this item. The first was written back in May, just after our meeting, after I reviewed the proposal. At that time, it proposed that the number of bedrooms would not be able to exceed two, and they had to adhere to some square footage areas, a minimum floor areas for an efficiency, a one-bedroom and a two-bedroom. The revised text eliminates that minimum floor area. So aside from that, I didn't really see much of a difference between the two iterations. So otherwise, I found it consistent with the planet and promoting economic development as well as mixed use.
I agree that the POCD supports mixed use. It's one of the top recommendations that we had, so it seems to support the POCD.
I just had a quick question on this one. So I do see the difference of the develop, from existing buildings to developments. I was a little confused about the terminology here, just for the strike through on 9.3.1, where it says lots used for mixed use shall have a minimum of 7, 500 square feet plus 1,200 for each efficiencies and one-bedroom. So it just, I don't, I'm assuming I'm misreading this because I just don't know if I'm understanding where it says that, it seems that it's now upping the minimum requirement for how much space they would need to have in order to do a mixed use. I mean, I do see the change where it goes from existing buildings, that this could potentially build new ones, but am I, am I just misreading that?
So all lots used for commercial purposes shall have a minimum of 10,000 square feet of area. If the lot's going to be used for a mixed use or for a two-family dwelling, it has to have a minimum of 20,000 square feet of area.
I guess I understand. I was speaking to the original language here, where I'm not sure if I'm misunderstanding this, but it seems to be increasing the minimum, like from the, sorry. The original text would seem to say this, and now it seems with this text amendment that we are increasing the minimum square footage. Is that correct?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
The two-family dwellings shall have a minimum of 20,000 square feet, which is already in there. So they're just looking to strike that existing language, so...
Okay. So it doesn't, it's really, we're just really getting rid of the whole section of asking for minimums on the bedroom size or, square efficiency or one-bedroom living. We're eliminating all of that altogether.
All together.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that, Mr. Geishel.
Well, I think it's to allow for mixed, more of a mixed-use development, because I believe mixed use was eliminated from the CB zone in the last, one of the last regulation changes. And so to bring that potential back without changing the minimum lot area of 20,000 square feet, this proposal proposes to do that and, at the same time, eliminate the square footage, the minimums on the units' size. So I don't, I don't know that it really adjusts the overall massing of the buildings. I mean, if you're going to limit it to 20,000 square feet, you're going to need that at least to have a mixed-use development. Yeah, I think that's what the attorney's approach is, is just trying to align with that effort. I mean, I certainly think that the proposal requires architectural plans, traffic study for developments exceeding 15,000 square feet. So it does have provisions for oversight, and I think they're asking all the right questions. And building heights shall be in accordance with Section 9, though the commission may permit architectural features to extend more than 10 feet above the 30-foot maximum. Again, asking about landscaping and lighting to be consistent with New England village character. I think it certainly puts some controls on the proposed uses, mixed use in any of the buildings.
To support walkability and pedestrian traffic, so it's it's consistent with the POCD also.
Yes. The use would be located in our downtown.
The, I would just ask one, the only thing I have in there, and I just say because it's in the POCD, and I don't know if it's, it doesn't seem relevant to have it in here, but I know when I brought this up with zoning in the past is about bike infrastructure, because it is in the POCD that we provide bike infrastructure at these developments. And I know there's nothing in here, and technically, it doesn't need to be in here for it, but it is in the POCD that we're supposed to provide for. I think the bike infrastructure they're talking about is pretty much just bike racks, but it does say that in there. I don't, have we traditionally included that in there? It doesn't seem...
I think that's going to be a site-specific kind of developer decision. Do they provide that type of street furniture, infrastructure on their own sites? It's something, I don't know that the zoning commission wants to entertain requirements requiring bike infrastructure. But certainly, as we look at traffic and circulation, we can consider, you know, that biking along, whether it be 156 or any road, as part of the traffic circulation. But I think as far as the bike racks and those types of facilities, that's going to be kind of site-specific based on the developer's needs.
Anybody else have any further comments or need more time to read? If not, I can entertain a motion. Gary wrote up a finding. We can, we can make adjustments to it if you want.
Sure.
Any, anybody want to read that first, or anyone who want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we find that this is in compliance with the Eastlime Plan of Conservation Development. Sorry, consistent.
This isn't consistent with the Eastlime 2020 Plan of Conservation Development. Great. It's like based on the findings in the memorandum by Gary Geishel. Won't you add to it?
You can use them if you'd like. I think that certainly supports the decision.
Do I have a second? Thanks. Any other further comments? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Any extensions? Thank you. Six to zero. Next up, municipal referrals. We have none. Next up on the agenda is old business, subdivision regulations, Section 4, application submission procedure. Gary, did you have any updates on that?
Yes, I believe we have in your packet some correspondence from the town attorney. It was quite lengthy, from the town attorney regarding the proposed changes in Section 4. So I think, due to the breadth of comment that he had regarding the one change, I think it certainly warrants, I'm going to need some time to review, go through his comments, and maybe come back to the commission with some recommended changes and ways forward. Certainly, feel free to take a look at what he had to say, and if you have any of your own thoughts and comments, feel free to share them with me. But I think between now and then, we've got a bit of revising to do to try to address some of his concerns. Obviously, interestingly enough, the Wetland Agency is, you know, revising their regulations rather significantly. He only had about four comments on an entire document, right? Whereas this was one section, and I've got like four pages of comment. So, yeah, it's going to take me a little time to get through. So I prefer if we can just defer that discussion to our next regular scheduled meeting.
Okay. Anybody have any comments or questions? Okay. We'll see the updates in the next minute. Next up on the agenda is conveyance of open space. It's for Catburg Lane, a heritage subdivision, a request by Mr. Paul Garrity for discussion on the halfway, it's Hathaway Farm. Mr. Garrity?
Members, I have for you a packet of exhibits along with the written memo of the comments I'm going to make tonight, so that you have that, and you're looking at the documents, you can reference the references in there to the exhibits. One thing I would point out in terms of this when you're reviewing it, there's exhibits in here that have exhibits attached to them. So the exhibits that, they all support what I'm about to present, but you'll see in the first exhibit, in there, there was a letter. It has other exhibits attached to it. Those begin with letters. The references in the memo are to numbers, so you would have to flip to those particular numbers to see that item. There's, and there's some redundancy only because there were a couple of letters to Mr. Geishel and to Mr. Cunningham that included the documents that are in here on separate occasions, so they appear more than once. But I wanted to make sure that the letters were complete, so when you're looking at, if you're looking at the letter, you know what we're referring to in the letter, even though it may be in the document itself that I, or the packet I just presented you again at a later point in that packet. So this applica, or this matter involves a piece of property off of Cedar Brook that was part of a subdivision back in the late 1980s. At the time, it was owned by a different entity, and subsequent to the approval of the Phase 1 and Phase 2 of that subdivision, Mr. Harney, who was here tonight, acquired the property. So by way of the process here, this matter appeared on your agenda back in December of 2024, captioned conveyance of open space, which occurred shortly after KSK Associates conveyed the property to the Eastlime Land Trust and Hathaway Farm LLC. None of the affected parties, KSK, LLC, Hathaway Farm LLC, nor the Eastlime Land Trust, were provided notice of that hearing. The matter was placed on this commission's agenda for consideration regarding that. And essentially, what happened is it got tabled because you were looking for more information on that. Obviously, my client has some issues with the fact that they weren't given notice and and then allowed to appear at the hearing at that point because they didn't have the notice. On January 13th, 2025, upon discovering this, on the agenda, I sent a detailed notice to the commission that my client's property was not subject to any open space conveyance obligations. That is Exhibit Number 1 in the application. My client received a warranty deed for the property, which they now own, and had a title search performed prior to its acquisition. The title search confirmed the subject property was being conveyed free and clear of any and all the concurrences and other restrictions. Subsequent to the January 14th meeting of this commission, on March 5th, 2025, and on March 25th, March 5th and March 25th, both of 2025, I requested a meeting with the selectman and Mr. Geishel to discuss the matter. I have discussed it on a number of occasions with Mr. Geishel. However, the selectman never responded to my inquiry with respect to that. I've included, as I noted a moment ago, these two requests in here, which have numerous documents supporting the claim that this property that's in question on Cedar Brook is in fact a viable and the remaining land of SKS Associates, and therefore, subject to the other subdivision regulations capable of being developed as a building lot. An analysis of the heritage at Eastlime subdivision, and that's what this original subdivision was called, in the land records reflects the following. The subdivision was proposed to be built in two phases. That's Exhibit 4 of this package. Phase 1 totaled 130 acres. Phase 2 totaled 200-plus acres. The open space requirements under the subdivision regulations at the time of approval in 1988 was 10%. The entirety of such dedication was allowed by regulations in existence at the time to be deferred. Nevertheless, and in one of my earlier letters to both Mr. Geishel and Mr. Cunningham, there is an opinion from Attorney Mark Block, who was representing the town at the time, indicating that that was a permissible approach, so that if you have a large subdivision, you could reserve, so long as you reserve enough open space towards the end, you didn't have to designate it specifically at the commencement of the application. The entirety, as indicated, was allowed to be deferred. Some five years later, Mr. Kavanuski, after the original approval, conveyed to the town of Eastlime two parcels totaling 20 acres, 20.71 acres, which are identified in Exhibit 5 of the addendum. Honor about October 15th, 2010, Phase 2 of the subdivision had been reduced from 200 acres to 3-plus, and that was approved by this commission. As part of the revised plan, the town received a conservation easement from its successor, that being KSK, totaling 5.2 acres. That's contained in Exhibit 6. On June 6th, 2017, the town obtained a conservation easement on 166.2 acres of what was originally a portion of Phase 2 of the subdivision. That conservation easement was conveyed to, excuse me, the property was conveyed to New England Forestry, and a conservation easement in favor of the town of Eastlime and executed by Mr. Nickerson, the first selectman, was recorded in the land records. That's in this packet as Exhibit 7. On August 27th, 2019, New England Forestry Foundation granted a conservation easement to the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection on 33-plus acres that was also originally part of the Phase 2 subdivision. As a result of these open space conveyances, a total of the original property, that being 192.18 acres, was obtained by the town of Eastlime and another 33 obtained by DEEP, for a total of 225 acres out of the original 332 acres that had been permanent, so that has been permanently preserved. Accordingly, 67% of the subdivision property had been conveyed into open space when only 10% was required. My client's position is, and I've researched this fairly extensively in terms of looking at the maps and the land records and what the position of Mr. Geishel and the town attorney, or the special town attorney, has been. Our claim is that the property is not subject to an open space dedication. There was no filing on the land records that requires or reflects any open space dedication obligation for this specific piece of land. The property is owned by my client, is owned by my client, has been conveyed by KSK, had, excuse me, had been conveyed to KSK by Northern Business Capital on August 18th, 2008, by way of a warranty deed, and no open space dedication obligations are required by the warranty deed. The map on which the town is relying is Exhibit 10, does not identify my client's property as being subject to any open space dedication requirement. Additionally, none of the other properties identified on the map was ever conveyed into open space. So there were a series on these maps of three other parcels that all were just there. They weren't labeled with numbers as building lots. They weren't labeled anything. And it's our position that those properties essentially ended up being remaining land that KSK acquired through the warranty deed from the prior owner. There's, in the land records, there is no formal dedication, nor on the plans themselves, any formal dedication of the property that's in question before you tonight as open space. And that is required under the Connecticut Land Use Statute, Section 47-5, which requires all conveyances to be in writing to be effective. Most telling is in fact that none of the properties on that were ever labeled, or any of the maps ever labeled as open space. There is, there are two pages out of a series of about 40 pages that say open space, but they don't identify what, if anything, on those two pages is open space, and they don't identify what's a building lot on there either. They just show the map of the land as it was proposed to be developed. In addition, this commission allowed one of those parcels to be resubdivided by Mr. Harney's business in 2008. So it's our position that while there may have been some intent initially to have this parcel as open space, that clearly had changed. parcel as open space, that clearly had changed over time. There's nothing in any of the files that indicate how that occurred, but it's clear that it did from the land records and that more than adequate open space was otherwise conveyed. In the package too, I would point to a map that is part of Exhibit Seven at the end of the deed, just before Exhibit Eight, which is a subdivision map of the property. It's located in Draw Six, Number 796. And if you look closely at that map, which was signed off on and approved by Mr. Geishel, there is a note on the parcel that's in question saying, "Remaining land of KSK Associates", clearly indicating that this was not open space property. I think one of the issues that I have heard raised, and I don't think this is Mr. Geishel's position necessarily, I think it's the tax assessor's permission is that position, is that because the property was conveyed to the land trust and then the land trust conveyed a piece of that to Hathaway Farm, that that somehow bootstrapped into open space. And then, believe it or not, the land trust, excuse me, the assessor changed the notation in her records from 490, right, which is not open space. It's forestry that my client paid taxes on during that period of time, as did his predecessor, minimal as they may be, but nonetheless was paying taxes on it. I think the assessor, when I last looked at, changed that back to 490, but the fact that the assessor made a change to her records doesn't impact that because this can only occur by way of a dedication to the town. And it's clear from the land records and the zoning, excuse me, the planning file, that at some point in time, the additional open space that went to New England Forestry and was subjected to a conservation easement that was signed off on by the town, and then the additional 33 acres constituted more than adequate open space for the project. And so this parcel and three others essentially were left remaining unidentified simply as remaining land of KSK Associates. And as a result of the commission placing this on its agenda back in January, it has essentially clouded the title to this because we do have a potential buyer for the property. And they're looking at this saying, but this was placed on the planning commission's agenda saying that it's not, or that it's open space. So we're looking for clarity from this commission, including a finding that essentially this is remaining land, subject only to the regulations as to whether or not it can be built on, but that it's clearly not open space. Never, it may have been intended at one point for open space, but something occurred in there where the town receives substantially more open space than would otherwise have been required. And this parcel and three others were left as remaining land of my client, Mr. Harney's KSK LLC.
Okay, I guess to clarify, and I did provide you guys a memo. I did discussions with Attorney Mike Carey regarding this idol. And whether or not the parcel is open space, I don't, I think that there's a bit of miscommunication there. I think it was identified on maps that were filed in the clerk's office as what would have been open space. And you can see in the memo, I've included those, those thought, those maps specifically. That being said, well, it was never formally conveyed, and I would agree with Attorney Garrity, that it's not open space because it wasn't conveyed as such. There's plenty and ample open space that was conveyed in terms of the subdivision as a whole and the overall entire tract. The conveyance of the 200-plus or minus acres to New England Forestry, I guess at that time, while I was here, was not aware that it was actually part of the phased subdivision. It was just a mere conveyance. So I mean, I think there's some miscommunication there that that conveyance was actually associated with the subdivision, other than it was land from the subdivision. But that being said, I don't think that's neither here nor there at this point. At the end of the day, I think this, the lot, or what the land that's left, is subject to our regulations, which if the applicant, the landowner, decided to apply for a re-subdivision for a one lot resub, this commission would have to entertain that application. That's where I think, based on my conversations with Attorney Mike Carey, it's not that it can't be built on, it just, it wasn't approved as a building lot at the time that the subdivision occurred, so it would be subject to a re-subdivision.
This seems like a, you know, a process that has taken longer than I've been alive. So how do you guys, if I ask, how do you, I mean, this, I very much see how there's some confusion, but how do you keep track of these considering that like, I think like the computer wasn't, was like in its early stages at this point in 1988?
Didn't exist in 1988. They called them wang, word processors.
For what you guys have for like a digital database.
So, well, I think, you know, Mr. Garrity spends a lot of time title searching and researching the deeds and top of Attorney Carey and going back through the files. It's the best we can do is go back to the historical record.
Chat GPT for that, I guess, right?
No. Yeah. One of the things too, I had a conversation with Mr. Carey or Attorney Carey last week, I think it was Thursday, and he said, well, under the East Lime zoning regulations, open space has the following requirements when it's approved. And I think Attorney Carey was using this to support his position, but when I looked at the reference, and I think it's seven dash two dash nine, but what it said was in order to be determined as open space, and you have to have the following items listed on the site plan. None of those items are listed on the site plan. In fact, I don't know whether that regulation even existed back in 1988. Probably did not. It probably came into effect after something like this on another property was discovered where, and I agree with Mr. Menape, you know, 1988, things were done a little bit differently. I don't want to say loosey-goosey, but keeping track of things like this, particularly with a large subdivision of this nature, gets a little difficult. But it's clear that for it to have been dedicated as open space, there would need to be a deed to the town or to a conservation entity that then by law has to sign and accept that deed from the entity donating it. And there is nothing, nothing in the land records to that effect. As I said, I think what happened here is when Mr. Harney and his predecessor were donating these large chunks of land, it was deemed satisfied. And unfortunately, nothing made it into the file saying, this is what occurred. So we have only the land records and the planning records to look at this, to understand that the open space requirement was met and that this parcel either forgotten or somebody said, okay, don't worry about it, it's fine, was never dedicated. And since it's never been dedicated, it remains, remaining land and it's subject to development. The, the only difference I think I would make in terms of Mr. Geishel's approach to this is our position would be we don't need to do re-subdivision. It's already an existing lot. Conveyance to the land trust, conveyances to land trust, and it's, there's citations to the zoning regulations in there, don't count as divisions, splits, or subdivisions of land. Anytime you convey to a governmental entity or to a conservation entity, that land that's developed is not. So if I, let's say I have a lot that's entitled to a free cut, and I give two acres of that lot to the land trust, that doesn't impact my free cut. I still, if I have enough land, I can still do another free cut because those were specifically exempted in order to encourage conveyances to conservation, land conservation organizations. So it would be my position that this property is not, it's an existing lot if all the requirements of the subdivision regulations and the zoning in terms of lot area and so forth can be met setbacks, then we can come in and apply for a building permit, assuming we can demonstrate the lat, the forma, former, and not have to actually make an application for re-subdivision.
Yeah. And Mr. Geishel, I guess the lawyer attorney disagreed with that consensus that if a re-subdivision or subdivision application would be necessary and just for planning commission to make a determination on any
Right.
open space requirements?
So, yeah, at the end of the day, the planning commission has the jurisdiction here to determine whether or not a division of land would constitute a subdivision or re-subdivision. So I think, you know, I mean, that's really the kind of the crux here is that the difference of opinion between Attorney Garrity is, I don't necessarily disagree that there's a lot, there's an existing lot of record. I mean, it's whether it's a building lot of record, as, you know, my position, it was just not approved as a building lot at the time of subdivision. It was demonstrated to be proposed as open space, whether then or in the future, potentially going to be moved and deferred to a later date, which in case, based on the land record, that appears to be the case. So that being said, it's, you know, the, as the open space migrates and moves around the subdivision, this portion of land has never been approved to be built upon. I would agree that it would have to meet all the zoning and health district requirements for septic suitability and I believe there's city water over there, so that's also helpful. But I don't know, you know, how does that, how does the conveyance of the land and dividing the land create a building lot? I don't, I don't understand that part, so.
Well, so, so the issue I think is, was this in existence at the time of the original subdivision? The answer is yes, that was the remaining land of that that's on that map. The difference between what Mr. Harney did previously is he created new lots. So that, out of one of, one of those parcels, that was the remaining land of, that required re-subdivision because you're, you're creating new lots. This was a piece that was identified as a lot on there and remained that. And we're not asking to create any new lots. So I don't believe, in my opinion, that
So if I understand correctly, then, so the argument is that, or rather, the position is that because that re-subdivision was approved, this portion of land was shown on that same map as a lot?
No, no, this, this is, this was always on the original subdivision.
As remaining land, as a lot.
As a lot, or it's something, yeah. It's never been identified specifically as open space. So then the, the additional open space and conveyances to the town and to the, and to New England Forestry Association satisfy the open space requirement, and this gets left back in 1988 as remaining land of S, of KSK Associates LLC. But we're not proposing to create a new lot or additional lots out of this. So that remaining land, if it can meet current zoning and subdivision requirements in terms of setbacks and area, frontage, whatever, doesn't need to be re-subdivided or doesn't need a subdivision application. It can be, if we can demonstrate, done administratively approved as a building lot.
So by definition, the changes in the maps that are recorded in the clerk's office, that wouldn't by definition be a re-subdivision? It doesn't affect any space that was previously for public use, such as the open space? I guess I'm trying to understand where, I just want to make sure it's not a re-subdivision and it's not a subdivision and
Right. It's, well, it's, the map hasn't changed. The map has been that way since it was originally, and that's part of the issue, right?
Well, the land trust conveyed land, so the map has changed.
The land trust conveyed a portion back when it obtained.
Right. Dividing the parcel, which you could do for the purposes of conservation, right?
Right.
It can retain a piece, I suppose, I sell it off. But doesn't that change the map? Right? So while they can do it, it's not a re-subdivision because they do it for the purposes of conservation. But it's still been, I think if you
Well, but I also think if I'm recalling the regulate, in terms of subdivisions, it can be administratively approved still because we would be able to demonstrate without having to either subtract or add to the property as it stands now, that the setbacks, lot area, septic, et cetera, can all be met. So I don't, I don't, my positions would be, it doesn't need to be, worst case scenario, it's a subdivision of the land at that point. But obviously, that's ultimately this commission's decision.
So one of the things I gave the commission in my memo was the definition of a re-subdivision, which was a change in the map and an approval recorded subdivision or re-subdivision if such change A affects any street layout shown on such map. This does not. Or affects any areas reserved thereon for public use or diminishes the size of any lot shown thereon and creates an additional building lot. If any of the lots shown thereon have been conveyed after the approval or recording of such map pursuant to Chapter 126, Section 8-18 of the Connecticut General Statutes as amended, the re-subdivision shall not include the use of an approved subdivision lot less than three acres in size for the construction of the town road. So I, no, I'd see there diminishes the size of any lot shown on and creates an additional building lot. So you're saying this is not an additional building lot?
Well, it's not an additional building because it existed as of the original time. So it's gotten smaller because a portion has been conveyed to the land trust, but it's not creating an additional building lot out of what was originally approved.
But the size of that lot has been diminished, and therefore would that not meet the definition of a re-subdivision?
Good.
And that's the position I'm taking. That's kind of where I'm at, based on my conversation with Attorney Carey. But I don't know, that's
Did you, did you want to follow up with the attorney on?
We certainly can. I mean, it's
I mean, if it's, if it's subdivision or re-subdivision, you should have the ability to take action on it if it's, if it's the requirements, but
Well, I think it's going to meet the requirements. I don't, it, it looks like it's an ample size.
Right.
Well, maybe they'll fit a suitable septic on it, I don't know. But I think overall, we meet the general setbacks in that neighborhood. So this, this is a little bit easier to envision. If you see parcel A, that was the area that was conveyed to the land trust. Parcel B is the remaining property.
I would be of the position that because it's a conservation cut, it doesn't, it's essentially the same as putting a conservation easement on it, which wouldn't be affecting or creating a new lot.
It almost sounds like if, if it wasn't the land trust conveying it for purpose of conservation, it would be a re-subdivision. So that, that's the exception that kind of throws a wrench in it.
So basically, it's interpretation of how the land was conveyed or anything.
So I would agree the conveyance of the land was not a re-sub because it was for the purpose of conservation. But whether or not it creates a building lot, I don't, I don't know. Well, the underlying zoning would allow for residential use and that's what would be, it'd essentially be applying.
I mean, it's clear it's not an approved building lot at this point in time. I don't think we, anybody disputes that.
There's no building permit.
Right.
But could they make application and
Call it a parcel.
Yeah, it's a parcel. So Mr. Harney is here, I'm going to let him explain what he did back in '08.
Yeah. For the record, my name's Steve Harney. I reside at 207 Clarendon Avenue in Southport, North Carolina. I think I've been in front of you, this commission recently. Family business brought me to town, so just my luck there was a commission meeting tonight. So now I just wanted to give some history on this because what I was really doing was wrapping up what your member Nick Menape said, this has been kicking around for a long time. So, and I do a lot of work with conservation easements and this, I call it a parcel because it wasn't a building lot, right? To be a building lot, you got to demonstrate the zoning setbacks, in this case, the ability to have septic water because it's below the service elevation, so it has city water. So what KSK did, which I'm the managing member, was, was give a warranty deed to the East Lime Land Trust. And there aren't any encumbrances on it. You know, my experience with open space has always been if there's not something recorded on the land records, it's not protected in open space, it doesn't have a conservation easement on it. So I took title to three parcels from Joe Kavanouski or Northern Business Capital. I don't know, Gary, were you the planner when I did the three lots? The Phase Two, over on Goldfinch at the end of that?
Yes.
Okay. So we incorporated a parcel, and it was still a parcel, we just put a conservation easement on it. a parcel, and it was still a parcel, we just put a conservation easement on it voluntarily. So what remained is, my understanding is, when you carve off, as an attorney, Garrity said, if it goes to a land trust or to the town, you're not creating a new building lot. You're not creating a parcel. There needs, needs to be, like Gary said, public improvements increase, or lots increase. So I try to simplify it, because I don't crawl into the weeds like the lawyers doing all the title searches, but, but really, it started as a parcel. I deeded it by a warranty deed. So what I'm, what I'm trying not to do is, the land trust will put me on notice that my warranty deed is defective, and everyone's going to end up in court fighting over, is it open space? Does it constitute a building lot? So my belief is, I'm really just looking for a finding from the commission, because ultimately, the decision lies with you. Whatever you pick, you know, we'll move the ball down the field accordingly. But, you know, I'm just kind of appealing to the commission to gather all the information and, you know, render a decision one way or the other. Me personally, I just think it, it is a parcel. Whatever balance is going to be held by the land trust, doesn't even become part of it. It's an exemption of the Connecticut General statutes as it applies to subdivisions. So really, what's going to happen is, you have a parcel, the land trust took it, there's a remaining parcel that's smaller than, what was the, what is the acreage on that, Gary? Do you know?
One point one six.
No, but I mean the whole thing before the land trust. What did I deed to the land trust?
Two, two points.
Just under four acres?
Two point.
Okay. And then the intention was, or the land trust was to exhibit that it could be buildable, because the parcel meets zoning, it is residential, the setbacks are more than adequate, there's city sewer, and I believe, did they demonstrate with Ledge Light?
I did want to point that out. We submitted to Ledge Light Health District a septic design, and that's been approved by Ledge Light, so it's septic permitted.
Yeah. And I don't know if there's any questions I can answer. I know they've researched this, and we've talked about this for a long, long time. I just deeded it over to the land trust with a warranty deed, as I'm cleaning up a bunch of stuff. As you know, I moved away ten years ago. I think at the last meeting, we said we've, we've protected a tremendous amount of acreage in the town of East Lime in perpetuity, but, yeah, I just kind of appeal to you to make a finding, and then we can move forward. I don't know if I can answer any questions. I think there's a lot of lawyers and planners involved in this, but I'm happy to try if you have any. I started this whole mess. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
Just to comment, just to summarize where we are, we have two lawyers that disagree and a very complicated history about dedicating open space and what's marked on documents and what's not marked on documents. That's a further assessment?
I think so.
So me, myself, not being a lawyer, I would have to read this like really closely, and I don't know that I'm ready to, that's just my comment.
Yeah. That sounds reasonable. I think, I think we all need more time to read this. I mean, we have the attorney's opinion. Mr. Garrity, I'm sorry.
No, that's, I don't, I, I just want to clarify, I don't think the lawyers disagree, I mean, in terms significantly. I, I think we have a disagreement, Gary and I and Attorney Carey, on the process.
Right.
Is, is it sufficient at this time, the information for you to simply say, it's, it's a building lot subject to the user regulations, or is it, excuse me, a parcel that could be built on if you can meet the other regulations, or is it a parcel that in order to do that, you have to come back to this commission with a formal subdivision or re-subdivision application? I think that's the real issue.
Right, the process itself. You don't disagree that, you know, what, what occurred, whether, no.
Right. Yeah, sometimes lawyers can agree on most stuff, but it's hard for us to agree on everything.
Right, right.
Then there's no need.
There was never a, there was never a formal determination in the past, I think, to both agree on that, I guess.
Correct.
But the process and how to deal with it in the future, whether
Right.
that to do with subdivision application, I think, is the
Right. This is, this is all about whether we need, whether you could look at this and say, "We're comfortable saying that it's remaining land of, subject to, you know, the regulations, but you don't need to come back to us," or you, we look at this and say, "You still need to come back to us no matter what," and make an application for it.
Right.
So I think that's, that's the issue.
Right.
Anybody have any comments or questions?
The commission feel more comfortable waiting until the next session? I mean, we basically, we're making advisory judgment on whether that this, for future, you would have to a formal subdivision or re-subdivision application, that's what we have to make a determination on?
This is just a lot of text to review.
Right. Yeah, I think, I think commission members have the consensus that we
I'm trying to get you guys to stay away from social media, so you have something substantive to read.
We need to make that a motion, Richard.
Do we need to make a motion to table this to the next meeting, or just?
Yeah, I think you can just table it. I'm going to suggest we, we label it differently though on the agenda, because I don't know that it's necessarily a conveyance of open space. I think it's, this is a determination, and I think if we label it pursuant to the statute
Yeah.
as a determination of subdivision or re-subdivision would be more appropriate.
Agreed.
So we can table it, and I'll leave it on the agenda as under the statute determination.
Do you need a, need a motion to table, I guess?
Sure.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Any further comments? All in favor of tabling it?
At the next meeting?
Thank you. All opposed?
Any extensions?
Nope. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Generally, we have new business. We have a new application by Kristen Clark from English Harbor Capital Partners, an application for a six lot re-subdivision of approximately six point five acres of land, zone RU forty on property located two thirty-seven Upper Patagonia Road. I guess it's a re-subdivision, require a public hearing.
Correct. We just received this yesterday, so today's the first day of receipt, so we have sixty-five days to schedule that and hold a public hearing. I'll, I'll get this out to staff right away. We'll start the review. I, I don't see why we can't really anticipate trying to go forward next month.
Yeah, I think we should be, yeah, eight, right, yeah.
Yeah.
This is, this, I haven't had a chance to look at everything that the engineer and surveyor did, but I think it's a complete application at this point, and so, and it's simply a straightforward subdivision.
Yeah, so it's pretty straightforward. I mean, a cursory review, so assuming everything's there, yeah, we should be ready to go next month.
Okay.
Anybody have any concerns or questions? Do you need a motion to start the public hearing next in July?
No, you can make one though, if you want, or I can just schedule it up as this things progress.
Not necessary, okay. All right, I guess that's it on the agenda. So I can entertain a motion to adjourn? Thank you. Second? Thank you. All in favor? All opposed?
Thank you.